We would invite all of you here to join us in a recital of Lord's Prayer followed by a moment of silence.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. But thy is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
It's now seven o'clock. Shall we see the councilman's call of order? Please join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See you, please. We'll call, please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb, here.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Cutlet?
Here.
Mr. Martin? Mr. McGlaughlin?
Here.
For the record, Mr. Martin is ill this evening, so he will join us. I've now obtained a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal from November the 3rd, 2025. So do. A motion by Mr. Robertson, the second by Mr. Robb, to dispense with the reading of the Journal from November the 3rd, 2025. Discussion. Go call, please.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Nay.
That motion passes. Now comes a time for public comment. Seeing no one in the gallery, we're having a public comment there. Is anyone receiving a public comment by email to share? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move forward through reports from standing and special committees. So in the absence of Councilman Martin, Councilman McGlaughlin, we should kind of go to report from the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance and Personnel Committee met November 13th. Again, look at your package, page one. I just want to mention that the 500 fund, the water fund, at less encumbrances of balance at the end of October 31st, we have 13,242. And we've been dealing with some chemical encumbrances there. Page two, the income taxes. We're up to about over 10% on the income taxes. From the last page of the packet, income tax collection this year, at the end of October, is over 5.3 million. Page three of the package, the wages are up over 7%. Cash investment reconciliation from the next page, the total investments are 15,967,753 dollars and 49 cents. And finally, the sudarash room is at 257,994 dollars. And then, as far as personnel, we have two personnel. One from the Health Department started work today, Jennifer Frazier. And with the Finance Department, Jessica Cyrus. She's going to have her first day the day before Thanksgiving. That's all I have.
Mr. McGlaughlin, are there any comments or questions for Mr. McGlaughlin in regard to his report? Mr. McGlaughlin?
I make the note, motion of the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement dated October 31st, 2025, be received, placed on file posted to the city website. Sir.
There was a motion by Mr. McGlaughlin, and a second by Mr. Roberts, that the combined financial statement and the reconciliation statement dated October the 23rd, I'm sorry, 31st, 2025, be received, placed on file posted to the city website. Discussion. Go call, please.
Mr. McGlaughlin? Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Mr. Cutlet?
Nay.
That motion passes. Thank you, sir. Move on to Utilities and Streets Committee. Councilman McGlaughlin, here.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Utilities recently met November 14th. Just have a few brief items to pencil along. Okay, the water treatment plant, PFAS, it's also called the Forever Chemical. PFAS stands for per and polyfluoroalkyl substances. It's also called Forever Chemical. It's called Forever Chemical because it breaks down so slowly in the environment, and it can last thousands of years. It was invented by DuPont in 1938. PFAS are a group of manufacturers of synthetic chemicals that have been used in industrial and consumer products since 1950s, using cookware, nonstick Teflon, stain and water resistant fabrics, et cetera. There are thousands of different PFASs. One problematic PFAS is found in firefighting foam, which ends up in the wastewater and water systems. PFAS breaks down very slowly, and can build up in people over time. The EPA mandated the public water system test for PFAS. The wastewater treatment plant tested for this quarterly four times back in 2023, with one of the four samples testing positive for one of the compounds in the PFAS makeup. There's a class action lawsuit. At this point, court approved settlements announced in 2023. Public water system test positive for PFAS in the water supply could violate the claim. We've reviewed and consulted with outside legal counsel to entertain a filing. The claim must be submitted by January 26th. And there's legislation tonight authorizing the mayor to do that. If Shelby wins the settlement, for the positive test money should be designated for the water fund to mitigate PFAS in the source water. Next item, smokestack update. Met with legal outside legal counsel to gain guidance on procurement strategies used for complex projects. Schedule a meeting in the future with our particular engineer to discuss project box for the structure, whether demolition or repurposing. Cost for demolition estimated about 500,000 to 1.3 million. The cost for repurposing is estimated at about 700,000. And then, when we're thinking about what we do with the smokestack, we also have to consider some of the upcoming electric projects and stranded debt. For example, in 2026, engineer the design for the relocation of the circuit breakers of the light plant, because our switch gears from 1952. In 2027, circuit breaker infield relocation. 2028, engineer George Hawk substation upgrade. 2029, the upgrade of George Hawk. And then, all of that's along with the smokestack project. What are we going to do with that? In addition, we have to pay down the debt for defuncted amps project. Stranded costs of 300,000. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman McGlaughlin. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. McGlaughlin in regard to his report? Thank you, sir. Move forward then to Safety Committee, Councilor Roberts.
Thank you, sir. We've been on the November. And we had mutual aid assisted press line on Drain Guard Fire. City Franklin Township on Structure Fire. System Plymouth on Long Outside Trash Fire. Springfield Fire provided mutual aid to our department for one EMS call. Staffing is down, three firefighters slash EMTs, and one captain, and will be down in additional position when Captain Finnegan's retired in January. This affects of his retirement will begin mid-December due to him having to take in the remainder of his time off. So, you know, we're going to be, we're going to be short. Civil Service, we've met several times. Grant Ubanks and Civil Service Commission. And they were going to meet again on the 6th. And so there's some discrepancy between the civil service ordinances and labor contract that need to be directed. And so, you know, we're going to start looking at that stuff. So, but, you know, we're going to be down, we're going to be down four positions in the fire department. And that's difficult to navigate. So, you know, we really need something about that. Department, we had one COVID case with hospitalization, two influenza's hepatitis C, three cases. You know, I mean, it's tis the season, right? People are going to start getting sick. The flu is going to pick up. And it's showing right now, even without this report. You know, I've heard today that there are, that there are other cases that are on board. So, let's see. Shelby Clinic, the blood pressure, blood sugar, and heart rate clinics. Marvin LeMoyne elaborates the first Friday of the month from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Park Village, every Monday from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., located in the office in the Activity Building. The Senior Center scheduled for November 12th and 26th. And at Y, every Tuesday from 9:30 to 10:30. So that's a, you know, each blood pressure checked, blood sugar checked, heart rate checked. So, mosquito control grant will be applied for this month. And birth certificates for October 32, death certificates 47, cremation permits nine, and burial permits nine, all in October. Rabies in the state of Ohio, we've had two human cases, 43 bat cases, one raccoon, and so far this year, 19 total positives in animals overall. And then, did a food plan review for the No Man Coffee that's going to go into the, over here to the, yes, burger over here, and milk and honey, so there is reviews for both of those. And then openings, of course, for No Man Coffee. And then we've had one rabies animal bite investigation. You know, it's more important. So, that's my report.
Thank you, Councilor Roberts. Appreciate that. Are there any comments or questions from Mr. Robertson in regard to his report? Seeing none, we'll move forward then to reports of city officials, reports from the mayor's office. So I've hit on just a few highlights before we get into the confirmation process there. Since our last council meeting, I've been occupied with typical mayoral duties and delights. On November 12th, we met with representatives from River West Partners in regard to the coming manufactured home park off Flynn Street. There will be some groundwork yet this fall and winter, but we'll have an official groundbreaking in early spring of 2026. So that's exciting news. All the hurdles have been cleared for that, so we're moving forward. So that's very good news. This Friday, our Sheldon River Football Team will be taking the gridiron with the opportunity to advance to the Final Four in the state finals. So, all the best to this football team. It's been an exciting team to watch. And just a fine group of young men. So thankful for Coach Mahan and the coaching staff there. They've done our community proud. Also, on November the 30th, there'll be a downtown Christmas lighting. And if I can bring this up, I want to read from the website of the, that naturally it'll work on here, from the CIC Facebook. I was going to read, I'll just go by memory. On the 30th, there will be a parade, a Christmas parade at 6:00. And then following the parade, that concludes the parade, there will be a downtown Christmas lighting, probably around 6:30-ish. And we've got a brand new, beautiful 25-foot Christmas tree down in the Black Forest Commons. There'll be two, I think they're 11-foot, 11-foot John Nutcrackers, that will also be part of this whole decoration scene. And we do want to thank the Curry family and the Armstrong family for those great, great donations. We'll say more that evening. So invite the community to come out on November the 30th, Christmas parade at 6:00, and then the lighting following that parade. So come on downtown, and we'll have lighting up and down the street. And it's just going to be, you know, they're grading, we'll say more about who all was involved with this that evening. And also, I want to congratulate you gentlemen for your reelection that took place here in November. So congratulations to you. It's my pleasure to work, and I think you know that, we have a great working relationship, and I highly value each one of you. So thank you for putting your names in the hat one more time. I'm just looking forward to these next couple of years of serving together. So with that in mind, we'll need to schedule a swearing-in ceremony like that. Just something kind of, make it nice, but not real long. It was held here last time. I can't believe it's already two years. So we'll try to do it, talk to Councilman Martin, that last, in between Christmas and New Year's, we'll, I'll send out an email out. We'll see if he gives a common date in the evening. It won't take long. I'd say we'd be in and out. I shouldn't say it that way. But, you know, I think we'll have a nice ceremony within a 30-minute time period. So, but again, congratulations, and we'll look forward to scheduling a swearing-in ceremony. All right, so hopefully everyone will be in town for that. And with that, I would move on to the confirmations that are listed. So thankful for residents in our community that step up and serve on these boards and commissions, and donate their time, and do it with great passion and professionalism. So if I could have a motion, if it would please the council, we could do all the confirmations at once, or read those off at least, and then we'd go from there. So it's your pleasure, gentlemen, confirmations. Mr. Roberts?
Move to confirm the appointment of Mary Bandon to the Health Department Advisory Board. Motion to confirm the appointment of Linda Klein to the Health Department Advisory Board. Move to confirm the appointment of Janine Perry to the Health Department Advisory Board. Move to confirm the appointment of Deborah Dorsey to the Shelby District Promotion Board, or Commission, sorry. And move to confirm the appointment of Ralph Razinsky to the Board of Park Commissioners.
Sir. All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Robertson, and a second by Mr. Robb to confirm the names that were read to those individual boards and commissions. Discussion. Go call, please.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Nay.
That motion to confirm in multiple fashion passes. Thank you. Any questions or comments from you in regard to my report? Mr. Roberts?
1985, anytime that we can beat the guy in the Tigers in a football game, I am, I am happy to do so, happy to go watch him do it, so.
And amen.
And Dorsey goes down in 1985. And anytime we can beat them from now on, let's do it.
I'm sure the rest of the football family is with you on that.
Go Whits!
You've got a second now. You've got a second. Let it all be. All right, very good. Let's move forward then to Mr. Crum, Director of Finance.
Thank you, sir. Councilman McGlaughlin, really had all the important stuff. City's still open for business, so I don't really have a report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Easter, Law Director, your report, Mayor. Mr. Joe Gines, Project Board.
Just one little item. We did open up this for a state to resolidate drainage project. Middle Ohio Land Works out of Lexington area was a low estimate. 199,664, or estimate was 348, so really good bit of there. So we're in the process of awarding that. And that's all I have.
Mr. Gines? How many questions for Mr. Gines? Oh, I probably should say something to Mr. Hansman, or to assure the public that we are indeed going to be picking up leaves again this year. We did have a truck that's down, so that's kind of slowed things up here a little bit. But our Service Department knows their way around town. We know what the biggest concentrations of leaves usually are. But we will continue to do our best to get the leaves picked up here in a very timely fashion. So we're on. All right. All righty. Let's move forward then to new business. New business. Is there any new business for council? Any unfinished business? We do have a smokestack we need to get an update from the Utilities and Streets Committee report. So that's where we are, and then moving forward with trying to present some viable options to council here if you're to decide to make the process. And the other unfinished business? If not, let's move forward to the latest assumption.
Ordinance number 34, 2025. Enacting Chapter 218 cybersecurity and ransomware attacks policy of the codified ordinances of the City of Shelby and declaring emergency.
Move the terms, rules requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Cutlet, that the rule requiring the ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion. Mr. Cutlet?
I was just curious of the urgency for this. This needs to be passed according to state law. And also want to protect our citizens with a ransomware cyber attack policy about further delay.
Mr. Robb?
Question through the Law Director. Did they say policy or ordinance?
Policy.
Okay. I would question why we're passing this policy as an emergency measure. Have more to say after this motion's delivered.
So we have on the floor the motion that the rule requiring the ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. And for the discussion, on the motion to suspend, go call, please.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Nay.
That motion fails, but we need it for. So it can be taken up for its first reading then. If someone wants to move that the ordinance be read, we give it a first reading.
Move for first reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Cutlet, rather, for the first reading of Ordinance Number 34, 2025. This is discussion then on the first reading. Mr. Robb?
I would define a policy as a loose set of guidelines to guide you through a situation or a process. I would caution passing a policy as an ordinance, as that's going to tie your hands. Policies are written in such a way that they can be amended quickly in situations where the situation changes. And you need to adapt a policy to fit the situation at hand. By passing a policy as an ordinance, you've tied your hands there. It takes a considerable amount of time to amend the ordinance. You've taken a policy and made it a law. You have to follow that exactly the way it's written. You can't deviate from that. I would caution everybody not to do that. Policies are an administrative function. They should be written by the administrator, in this case, that would be you. And then adopt it citywide. I have a real problem doing it this way. When you implement a policy, you've implemented a policy. There's a difference between a policy and a directive, and a directive and an ordinance. Directive would be more constrictive than a policy, and an ordinance is absolute. So I would caution doing it this way. I'm not in favor of this. If you want to adopt the policy as it's written, it certainly obliges you to do so, which is not a function of the council to adopt policy.
Thank you. Mr. Gines?
There are certain things that council does have to, while it's all in the wordings and the semantics of the wordings on this, but council does have to pass in this about if there is a ransomware accident that it will take an ordinance from council to, before anyone's paid. That has to be in the ordinance. Also, that the employees have to be trained here and so forth. So that was from the guidance from the state.
Mr. Cutlet, then we get back to Mr. Robb.
I'm not going to speak to that, because I figured it probably did have something to do with the state mandating that we come up with an ordinance. But I had a question on the wording on the fourth warehouse, the last one. It says down there that Chapter 218 of the codified ordinances of the City of Shelby be enacted to adopt a credit card policy. We already have a credit card policy. It's Chapter 216.
It's just a type of grab, a little hair, like in consent. We can fix that, the cybersecurity ransom attack policy.
I would be in favor of changing that wording, that subword by Mr. Easter.
So it's been proposed by unanimous consent in the fourth whereas to after the word, the words adopt a, do the strike, credit card, and insert cybersecurity ransomware in those in that place. Tax policy. What part? Just from the heading, cybersecurity and ransomware attack policy. Tax, okay, pump from the heading. There'd be cybersecurity, ransomware, attacks. Those words placed in there instead of credit card. Everyone understanding the change we made, their modification. Are there any objections to my unanimous consent? On W here? The mayor, if I may, after that, just suggest council give this a first reading. I'd be happy to share with council what is required to be enacted and adopted by ordinances versus what's required in policy. To be so kind as to give this a first reading, Joe, I can forward those emails to you. And your words are understood. Mr. McGlaughlin?
I agree with Mr. Easter.
Also, and I'm going to ask the lawyer, we probably should, in this first thing, also extract any emergency measure word, correct? By unanimous consent, I'll remove all emergency language. That, what do you want to say? Okay, so Mr. McGlaughlin is moving with the advice of the Law Director to remove all the emergency language in the Ordinance Number 34, 2025. So all. So I understand they want to remove all emergency. Okay. Are there any objections to remove all emergency language? If not, that will be done, the Law Director, if he has. So, and then a further discussion on a first reading of Ordinance Number 34, 2025? I think we all know the end, but we want to get to the end of this thing. So I would just ask council to give this a first reading and have more detailed discussion as we move along. Go call, please.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Nay.
Ordinance Number 34, 2025 passes as first reading.
Resolution Number 37, 2025. Authorizing the mayor as Director of Public Safety to enter into an agreement with the Richmond County Commissioners for payment of legal council fees for agents and declaring emergency.
The resolution's been passed.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Cutlet for the passage of Resolution Number 37, 2025. Discussion. Mr. Cutlet?
I think this is just the normal thing we do every year with the county to pay our lawyers, and so nice to represent the ones that can afford it.
Any further comments, Mr. Crum, or can we summarize it? Yes?
From my finance side, it's a bit of an estimate. As far as the certification, I based it on, when we had appropriations this year, I expect it to be very similar.
Thank you. In the further discussion, go call, please.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Nay.
Resolution Number 37, 2025 passes.
Resolution Number 38, 2025. Authorizing the mayor as Director of Public Service to execute a contract for legal services for AFFF, PFAS litigation, and declaring emergency.
The resolution became passed.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Cutlet for the passage of Res- A motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Cuthbert for the passage of resolution number thirty-eight, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion? Mr. Crump.
One note on the certificate for this one, this is also an estimate. In the contract, the legal fees come out of whatever we receive. If, if they don't receive anything, then we don't pay the bills. So I'm estimating this, if for some reason, when we get the paperwork, whatever we get comes out, we may have to, just to branch the book. We don't actually have to pay anything, this is just a book entry.
Mr. Cuthbert.
I just wanted to add that this is in regards to our Utility and Streets Committee proposal earlier Mr. McGlocklin gave. There, there could be, if we give some money for this, it'll go towards the equipment that could possibly have to be installed at the water plant to treat this. So that's kind of why we want to go forward with this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Go call please.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Cuthbert?
Yeah.
Resolution number thirty-eight, two thousand twenty-five passes. Any miscellaneous business, is there any miscellaneous business that you're up for council? Mr. McGlocklin.
Mayor of November, yeah.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. McGlocklin and a second by Mr. Roberts for adjournment, go call please.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Cuthbert?
Yeah.
Motion passes, we adjourn at seven-thirty officially. Thank you, gentlemen.